We call a meeting to order the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission for July 25, 2019, and invite you to join with us in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In case of fire, there are two ways to exit these chambers. To my left, you'd exit through those double doors, turn left, walk down the flight of stairs, turn left again at the base of the stairs, and continue on outside the building. Or perhaps the quickest and best way is to exit the doors at the rear of the chambers. In either case, once you're outside, please walk a safe distance away from the building. Secretary, please take the roll.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Yeah.
Nick LaFicus.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Mary Scott, absent. Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray, absent. Guillermo Salazar, absent. John Petronella.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
John Petronella will be sitting in for the absent commissioner. Several, you can take a pick, Bill. Okay. Approval of minutes for July?
Eleven.
Eleven, thanks.
I move to approve the minutes of July 11th.
Second.
Any additions, errors, or corrections? Or hearing on, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five. And all abstain?
All abstain.
And, Richard, abstains. Two abstentions. Motion passes. At this point in the meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions relating to planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone who's present, provided that no one may discuss any matter of business at this time that is already elsewhere on the agenda, any matter that is part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission under those conditions? Anyone would like to address the commission under those conditions? Last call to address the commission under those conditions. Hearing, no one available, we shall move along. Bond release. Nothing?
No, we do have.
I'm sorry, we had one.
Yes.
Right. Bond release is for 160 Hazard Avenue, and it's for landscaping bond in the amount of 25, yeah, 2,500, $25,110.
There is a report, I believe, from Rick that you received recommending the release of the bond, based on his site inspection, so... Do you have any questions?
I do have a question about that.
Well, go ahead.
I have a question about that. Do you remember when they first did that project, they tore down all the trees, including the neighbors in back, and they were supposed to put a tree buffer back?
Larger trees, in fact.
Yeah, there's a separate landscaping bond that we also hold in addition to that. So this is the landscaping bond that they submitted.
Because you can still see the building pretty well from the people's house behind it.
Instead of the normal tree size that we require, they were supposed to put in a larger tree.
So we have two landscaping bonds?
Right, so they filed bonds first, and then after they cleared the trees, they filed a second bond to make up for it.
To compensate for that, they still have a bond out.
Yep.
Okay, so this one isn't for that.
Right.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, a motion that we approve the resolution for the release of the landscaping bond, as indicated in our, as prepared by our, the Planning Department, as dated July 25, 2019.
So vote.
Motion's made and seconded. Any comments? Hearing on, all in favor? Opposed, no abstentions unanimous. No old business, new business. Public hearing, 2944, 44 Lake Drive. Secretary, please read the legal notice and take the roll.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, July 25, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing 2944, 44 Lake Drive, special permit application for the construction of a 1,250-square-foot addition with an attached garage and a 300-square-foot rear deck. Lisa Crissati, owner, applicant, map 97, lot 48, residential R33 zone, and located within the Lake Overlay District. Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Nick LaFicus.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
John Petronella.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Alternate Petronella will be sitting in for the absent commissioner. Applicants here, if you'll come forward, give your name and your address, and present to the commission with your proposal.
Hello. My name is Lisa Crissati. I live at 44 Lake Drive in Enfield.
Uh...
Okay. My name is Lisa Crissati. I live at 44 Lake Drive. I'm here asking permission to put an addition on my property on Crescent Lake. The total, the total addition, total square footage will be about 2,100 square foot. Part of that is on a second, second story, so the main living area will be increased by 754 square foot. The second story will also be 754 square foot, and then a two-car garage of 576 square foot. The footprint of the plans would be about 1,300 square foot, and the living space portion of that would be 1,500 square foot. I know one comment that I received in the preliminary reviews was that the deck was encroaching on the 35-foot setback. My architect is working on revision to pull that deck back three feet, so that would comply with that setback.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to mention that I sit on the Wetlands Committee, and this woman came before us, and if she wishes me to recuse myself from this board, I would recuse myself. No? Okay.
State so please, so we can hear.
I don't see any need for her to recuse herself. I think she's familiar with the project.
Okay. Questions from the commissioners, if you're done? Yes.
Where did you say the deck was encroaching on the property line?
The deck was originally going to be 12 feet wide, and I think it was overlapping on the lakeside, about two foot over the 35-foot encroachment.
Okay, you're talking to the water line.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Because the water line kind of arcs, the deck, that one corner of the deck was, was going over the 35-foot line.
It had to be pulled in.
So pulled the total length of the deck back three feet to comply with that.
Because I just have one question. In terms of, you know, I know the engineering departments had indicated that your basement was one foot, or was lower than the flood elevation.
Correct.
And had, did you raise that up, or has that been addressed, or?
No, that's been, I don't know if you want to address that, but that's, the full basement is going to go in because it's required to access the existing basement, and the stairs coming from the main house, presently, there's a, just an outside access to the basement, a walkout basement, and there's no access from the house to the basement. So in order to put those stairs in, that's going to be part of the addition. There's a mudroom with a stairway that goes down into that basement. So it would kind of go down into a, two, three, four, crawl space, and then you'd have to kind of crawl to the main basement.
So basically, the reasoning is that the, there's an existing basement that's at a certain elevation.
Correct.
And you're going to match your new basement to that existing elevation.
That's correct.
And that, have you really experienced a lot of flooding in your existing basement?
I have not.
Or none at all? So basically, what we're just doing is matching the existing conditions, and, you know, the thing is, you'll have to more or less deal with some potential flooding that might occur there, but, you know, based upon your experience, you haven't had a real problem with that condition.
That's correct, and floodproofing of the concrete is a possibility, depending on, you know, the conditions we face as we dig. If there's a need to waterproof the basement, we can do that. The basement primarily is used for storage of kayaks and that sort of thing, so even if it were to flood, there would be no damage to the property or...
And normally, the weight of the slab is a lot more than the hydrostatic pressure that might be pushing it up, especially if it's only a foot or two, you know, of real potential change in elevation, and the water will sort of permeate over it, and it shouldn't really heave anything, so, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I clarify this? In actuality, the house and the addition are outside of the flood area. It was just, the town engineer was just noticing that the base, the basement level was actually below the base flood level, however, the house is not in the flood area, so...
Interesting.
Well, I mean, it can happen all the time, so, I mean, the house itself is not subject to flood regulations, so...
Did you say the basement was a walkout, the existing basement?
Yes, it is.
Right, so your hydraulic, you won't get your hydraulic pressure because it's going to flood from above. But I agree with Commissioner Suzak that, I mean, you're just matching what's there.
Right.
I mean, you placed the addition, you couldn't ask for a better place as far as the town's concerned, right smack in the center of the yard. Looks good to me, so...
Thank you.
She's also changing the circle of driveway, which had two exits out onto the road, and putting it down, it was single, which helps the traffic a little bit, or people.
Yeah, I think it'd be a nicer improvement for the area.
Yeah, the existing driveway is essentially crumbling anyways, so there'll be one single driveway with a turnaround coming up to the garage.
Yes.
I saw on the notes from your architect or engineer, whoever, that the existing garage will be removed after the construction is done.
That's correct.
Do you have any timeline, because these things have a way of falling through the cracks? I know you have, it's going to be where your driveway is, right? So you have to knock it down for your driveway?
Correct. My thought process is to keep it up to store construction materials or contractor tools, that sort of thing, during construction, but whenever it needs to be taken down to pave the driveway or grade.
Oh, no, no, I just wanted to make sure nine months down the road, if I drove by, I wouldn't see it after you got your CO.
No, I'm looking forward to that coming down. It's not in great condition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, actually, I don't, I don't think she's even got a lock coverage issue. I mean, other than it being...
That wasn't my question. My question is, the note said, when construction was finished, they were going to take it down, so I just wondered if, you know, a lot of people say they're going to take things down, and then they get their permits and their approvals, and they're still standing.
Well, things change, and I mean, just in this particular case, it's not a condition of approval because that garage can exist.
No, I'm not asking for it to be a condition of approval. I just was curious, and she answered my question.
Just for the notes, that are, they're own notes, but for the record, that the engineering concerns are, have been met and been addressed, and the water pollution control, they had no problems at this time, and if a project changes, they'll have to review the application fire department. There were no comments received. Police have no comments at this present time, and the health department, they have no comments. Have you been, have you received and, had you read the conditions that are proposed to be?
Yes, I received the draft report, and I'm agreeable to all conditions.
You have no problem with them?
No.
Okay. Cheryl, entertain a motion if you have one, or a further discussion.
He can open it.
I will, yeah. I'm sorry. Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor against the application? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor against the application? I was trying to save some time, it was mentioned earlier. Okay, now the chair will entertain a motion if you have one.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the draft, draft resolution for a public hearing, oh, I lost it.
2944.
2944, as, as prepared by the Planning Department, dated, you know, July 25, 2019, with the two-site-specific conditions and a total of 25 conditions. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
It's like a good project.
It really does look like a good project for the area.
You thought of everything.
A good improvement to the lake area.
I do think that this commission, once it's done, should have to go inspect the deck and sit out there over the lake.
Absolutely.
You know, figure next summertime to do a final inspection, just to make sure it's nice.
Check the kayak storage.
There you go.
Okay, if you're ready. All in favor? Any opposed? No abstentions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with the project. Site plan review, SPI 1784, 90 Elm Street. This is the Friendly's of Enfield Square. If the applicants are here, again, please give your state and name and address for the record, and tell us about your project, and for the record, again, John Petronella will be sitting in for the missing commissioners.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jay Kahn from the Science Center. With me is John Seipk, Development from Friendly Restaurants. Thank you for reviewing our application. Staff has already made some comments, and I'll review the application details. The Friendly's at 90 Elm is literally the end of the mall pad, and so it's between, it's the egress off of, or the exit off the highway ramp, then the restaurant, and then the entrance into the mall. And so they have sort of a strange lot as you get into, recognizing it quickly. And so even though they've been there for a long time, their objective is to get a freestanding sign on the front of that property, like if it were the other side of the street for the retail area. They're following the code 10 dot 30 dot 5, which allows a 32-square-foot, 20-foot above height with a 10-foot setback. It is their branded pylon that is same as all restaurants. The restaurant does have a small monument sign as you go in that entrance, and then that is the turn into their lot, and they would sacrifice that if the board determined to do that, but it does mark that, but it's not visible from the road, and certainly not coming off the highway, or coming up the other street because of that tree buffer that is along the front of the mall. So they are going to use the center of that front parking lot. They would use bollards and berms and plantings to, to separate that out for that section. So the topography from the, the way it sits at the very end of the mall pad, from the tree buffers, and having a plot that is part of the mall pad, but not really is the very edge of it, they are looking for a special permit to get rights. It is a typical retail sign that is all the rest of food service in that area, except that they're on the mall pad. So we look forward to your support of this special permit, and prepared for any questions you may have.
Is the sign going to be illuminated inside, or just shined up on?
Thank you. It is an internally illuminated LED pylon.
Okay, thank you.
Any further commission questions? John?
Question, the, the sign's supposed to be an overall height of 20 feet above grade?
I believe, its design is 20 feet above grade, which I thought was that section of code.
Okay. All right, yeah, okay, I thought I, I thought I read 24 feet, but that's 240 inches. Okay, I'm sorry.
Correct.
Anyone else? No questions? Then I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve a site plan review 1784, as presented.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing on, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous.
Thank you. It's true for all of you. You get to wrap up your business and go home.
Okay. Any, any other business? No correspondence? Nothing that was in their folders? Any commissioners' correspondence?
Just starting to see a bunch of those little signs pop up around town again. All the little mini marts and...
Oh, yeah.
They're all over the place again.
That place, I think it's Sam's on the corner of Washington and Brainerd Road, they got, all over their pylon signs, they got signs stapled all over it, it looks...
The two are the EDB cards. We accept the EDB cards out on the tree belt, and CBD oil. Seems like every store's selling that stuff now.
Yeah.
It's got stuff.
Rick has actually, in that case, already gone out there and talked to that, the person that owns that property, so I guess they might just be taking them in and putting them back out whenever he goes out there or something, I'm not sure, but he, I thought he said that that was taken care of, so...
Rich has, I know he's been out there a couple times for other things.
That's a chronic violation.
Right, no, he did, and it was corrected for a while.
He's done that for years.
It's like he gets them, and then they slowly, one sign, then two, and next thing you know, you got five signs out there again.
He's got them all over there. There's also on Enfield Street, it's the market, exactly, there's a little clothing bin out there that's been there for a while, and they aren't allowed, last I knew.
Which, which property is that?
Is that used for Buddy's Market, Buddy's Little Market?
No, 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 it's on the right-hand side. It's up by the bank, and I can't think of the market that's, that's there, the name of the market, because I don't go in there.
At Route 5?
Near the 360 Credit Union?
Yeah, right, it's near the...
So across from the old Brainerd School?
Yeah, yeah.
It's like Stop and Something?
Something, I don't know what the name of it is. There's a little white clothing.
Yeah, near Dairy...
The one with all the signs out front.
Yeah, right next to it.
I don't know, it just seems pretty repetitive that, you know, you go out and force it, they take them down, and two weeks later, they start popping up.
Yeah.
I mean, I think once you have a violation on record, that, that violation should stay intact, and then if you violate it again, I mean, it's held against you. What's the point?
There is something like that.
I mean, we can't keep going out every day.
I thought when we...
We've developed the procedure for that already, supposedly.
Yeah, there is supposedly a procedure online that it increases if it keeps going, but I don't know if it's ever been used.
But if it keeps going, but what they're doing is, they take them down, Rick signs off, closes it out, and then two weeks later, it shows up again.
But the ordinance that we supposedly wrote says, if they have to go back, then they go back to the original penalty. So it just compounds.
Well, why don't we just have that section given to us at the next meeting? The policy on repeat offenders. In other words, like, it's been said by Ken, the, Rick goes out, he gets them, take them all down, and then they're good for a couple times that Rick drives by, and then they're back again.
It's about a week, yeah.
One's up, then two's up, and it happens all over town, and it would be easier to enforce if we did it consistently.
Especially weekends when they know these are on duty.
Right, and I wasn't part of what you're talking about, Charlie, but it seems like Rick closes it out, and once it's closed out, then it starts all over again, and I like what you're saying.
But the ordinance says, if you come back again, then you go back to whether it's closed out or not, you go back to the original offense.
So many violations, and then it...
You don't get to do it 20 times anymore. That's why we did that.
Right, right, that's why I'm agreeing. I think Jenny's right. Let's get the language, review it, and then if it's got the teeth, let's start enforcing it.
And if Rick has our support as a whole, it will carry it a lot further.
But we could do that, and, and, you know, my philosophy is, once a cease and desist has been issued, and, and then they satisfy the cease and desist, you know, once, if somebody comes out with another sign, you just slap them with the fine again.
I don't think Rick is giving them a cease and desist, though. I think Rick is just going in and talking to them like it's a good thing, but I think he's going in, talking to them, gets compliance, and then he gets to go back again in several weeks. So there is no cease and desist for signs, that I'm aware of.
We have a written policy about if he goes back again.
Yeah, we'll, we'll give you the policy.
Right, but I'm all for walk-in, give them the warning, they take them down, they comply, we're good. We don't need to throw the book at them, but if they got to go back, like you're saying, then, then you do the cease, and then...
There's files on that property.
The only other thing I have for Rick is South George Washington, was it South George Washington in Maple, Hazard Avenue?
Division.
Where the grass was overgrown. It's still overgrown. He said he was having trouble finding owners or something there. I don't know if he had any luck with it.
What was the address again?
It's the corner lot.
It's actually two corner lots. Over by the library, where Middle Road and South George Washington and Hazard Avenue will come together. When you come out to the sign, you can't see through the tall grass to see if traffic's coming, and Hazard Avenue is a kind of a busy, busy road. If you sneak out far enough and lose your nose, then you can see if they're coming.
That was in his last report, because I remember reading it.
I know, it's in his report. I just wonder if he had any...
That, that really would be a blight issue, but...
Whatever it is.
Safety.
Yeah, I understand. I just want to let you know that Bob Santanella is out on medical leave, and we just lost Bill Lee to, he, he left the town to get a different job, a full-time job, so we only have one blight officer right now, Dave Thomas, so...
Okay.
So I'm sure that he's trying to keep up with everything, but...
I'm sure he is.
Things are piling up a little bit for him.
Porter and Chester's looking pretty shabby, too, on Waymouth Road, since they closed.
They got a sign out to advertising their classes, but...
Yeah, but I mean, the grass is, it just, it looks abandoned now, and that's a neighbor, that's right in the middle of the neighborhood.
They're old school.
Yeah.
Are they the owners, though, or is that the mall?
I'm not sure. On Waymouth Road?
I think that might be for sale.
Yeah, I'm not sure who owns it. Doesn't matter who owns it, it's, people live right around there, and it's just...
Oh, yeah, no, it should be taken care of.
Yeah.
So it's not used at all?
No, and that's what I mean, the parking lot's starting to become overcome, not that it was in good shape to begin with, but the weeds are all coming up, and...
There are other businesses in there, aren't there, or they're all?
Actually, in the same location, in the end of Carlisle Street, there's a house for sale that's, nobody's maintaining the yard on, too. And the owner, the owner's in Maine, so the real estate company is handling, selling it, is not taking care of it.
They got the wrong Realtor.
Okay, that takes care of the commissioners' correspondence. Director of Planning report.
That doesn't look good.
No, it's just, it's like, where do, where do I start? No, I've been pretty busy. I did receive some correspondence from the attorney for the owners of the Enfield Square. There, I haven't had a chance to go through them, but it's a potential overlay zone and just some conditions of covenants and things of that nature that they want us to look at, so it's, you know, of a confidential nature, but we will look at them and see if it's, you know, what, where we think it should go from there, but I just received them, so. I've been working with the town manager, he's creating a Enfield Business Breakfast in September, so that's something that I'm going to be working on, and kind of, since it's coming up fast, we'll be working on that quite a bit. I also have been helping... I also have been helping Building and Grounds and the Public Works, working on the improvements for the Harriet Beecher Stowe. And so you have that application coming up. So we hadn't really heard too much about it until it kind of was occurring. So we kind of modified things after, a little bit after the fact. But I think we got a better plan, and I think everybody understands that in the future, they should probably talk with planning and zoning staff before they do anything.
You're talking about Stowe?
Yeah, so...
I got my pack and drove by, and the parking lot's already in.
All they need to do is...
I can neither confirm nor deny that.
And I think we, as a town, need to set an example, so I'm glad you talked to them. And next time they do it, if they do it again next time, we could just call them to task that.
Yeah. You know, had we gone through the ART, and maybe I should have been a little bit more forthcoming, but I wasn't sure that they were actually proposing to do anything other than just move into a building. So, but, you know, an ART ahead of time would have been very beneficial for all involved, so...
I'm not even sure that that's the best place for that parking lot. I mean, it's right in the front of the school. All our schools have the, you know, turnaround of the driver. That's all gone now. It's going to be a straight parking lot along close to this road.
The turnaround is still there. The bus circles, yes, it is.
It's all ripped out. The whole center is ripped out.
The whole center is, but the circle is still there for the buses.
Well, because they haven't paved the center yet. Once they pave the center, it's all going to be a parking lot.
Yeah. Well, there is some landscape areas in between there.
Is that where the new school, the Head Start's going to?
Yes.
Well, there was a rush on that.
The Head Start, yeah. I think the Head Start is going to where, Head Start's going to Stowe and...
Well, a rush, I've always offered, as long as I can get four people together, we'll be...
Yeah, I forget the terminology for the other organization for some disabled children with special needs, I think is what it is.
I just think the parking lot should have been on the side of the school. They already did a parking lot over there. They should have expanded it.
Yeah, they had room back there.
They also have a lot of wetlands on the site. So we actually looked at some alternative locations, and it wasn't as easy as you would think it would have been.
Well, that's why if they came in front of us, we could have all had this discussion together instead of them, you know. It's easier, the saying, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than permission.
Well, we're going to try to change that sequence of events in the future.
But this is the town.
Yeah.
This is the town.
Just let them know we're not happy.
If the town is going to lead by pulling this, what are you telling the residents?
Well, that's...
This is a perfect example. This is, you know, we go after people for tall grass. The town of Enfield's the worst culprit. And, you know, I love my town, but, you know, we lead by example. And this is a perfect example of what not to do. And how do you yell at a resident for doing the same exact thing?
I noticed on Elm Street, they're pulling out sections of the sidewalk along the, that's on the section that goes from into Hazard.
Where the right turn is.
Right, right. They're pulling out sections. I think they're replacing them.
I think so. I noticed that.
I don't know what else is going on. That's all, but...
That's the state, they're exempt.
No, that's not a state road. Elm Street, it's a town road.
I think they're just upgrading the sidewalks there. That's all. They're removing and replacing.
It was a staggered removal. It wasn't a total...
Right.
So that's what I think is happening.
Well, I mean, but somebody should be notified, I think, in the planning department in case they were doing more. It's just like when they were pulled out along Hazard Avenue there, they pulled them out with a promise to put it out now.
But they're also doing the driveway pads, too, at the same time. They're on Elm Street.
Well, that's...
All the driveways coming in are getting resurfaced to the street.
That's true. They'll be changed from cement to the homicide.
So that doesn't have to be approved now?
What?
Stowe?
Well, we do administrative approval for the front parking.
And it includes a small area in the back expansion of like 18 spaces.
That's what Item 13 is.
Yes.
So that's up to you, because it says administrative approval, which is stupid. It's already done.
Laurie, what agency with the town is responsible for that HB Stowe? Buildings and Grounds or Public Works?
There's the Board of Ed, and they are working with the Public Works and Buildings and Grounds. And there was a number of different organizations from the town involved. Unfortunately, I found out a little bit late in the...
Because are there any drawings that were done in order to define, you know, what they're going to do? And was there a design professional associated with that?
There are. We had to modify them a little bit to make them meet the minimum requirements. So I don't have them with me. Do we have them with...
This also goes back to...
I guess you just got them a little while ago.
The Fermi sign. Now it's the Town Annex. So does the Board of Ed think they can do whatever they want without, because this is the second time, and the sign is still up at Fermi, and they have not come in front of us for that. We never approved that, yeah.
Oh, that's never been approved.
So, I mean, so the Board of Ed just gets free rein. They do what they want on their buildings, and that's it. Well, this is the second example.
Well, I was going to say, the Board of Ed doesn't do the upkeep on the buildings. The sign, yes, they shouldn't have done that, but the grading and stuff, they have nothing to do with that.
It's their property. They have to approve it.
No, town took over all the buildings. Remember from the school?
Yeah, they did. A long time ago.
They do all the maintenance and everything on the grounds, and the town runs that now.
Who's in charge of the Stowe project, the town or the Board of Ed?
I believe the Board of Ed.
Right. It's still a school.
So, you know...
Yeah, it's still a school because they use it.
The board took out a loan for the expansion of HB Stowe's school.
Right.
So it had to remain a school for so long. And that's why they did the shuffle with Educational Resources for Children or whatever group is in there, so it would maintain its school status. The schools that did not have the loans outstanding, or the pilot money, whatever, were turned over to the town.
Adult Ed's still out there.
They're at Fermi.
Really?
Who's at Fermi?
Adult Ed.
Oh, yeah.
Because they were out there for a while.
So the building official and I have, you know, agreed that we're going to try to set up a meeting with the leaders, whoever they are over at the building, I'm sorry, the schools, superintendent of schools, and whoever does their projects, and, you know, work with them so they know what should be done in the future. And that way, we can circumvent this issue again.
They should know what needs to be done.
This is, yeah.
Author should know.
Okay, do we want Laurie to administratively approve it or not? That's the bottom line.
It's already done.
Well, it's not paved.
I know.
It'll be Monday.
Myself to approve something that's already done and never came before us, it's like...
It's a formality.
We don't even have the plans that one of you asked, I think, John, us to see.
I'm sorry. I have two copies of the proposed plan as we amended it or modified it. If you want to look at it.
When did you get those plans, Laurie?
Pardon?
When did you get those plans?
Last week.
After it was started.
Already graded and everything, right in.
So I do need these back, and I'm sorry, I only have two copies. So basically, what happened was, they were going to have this front island, probably only about like eight feet or a little less. And there was only a 10-foot drive aisle here. And so what we did is, we came in and said, okay, you need to be 10 feet back of the drive aisle. That's got to be 18 feet, because it's a 60-degree angle parking. And then we just drew it up for you, so...
What are their widths of the parking, or you don't know?
Nine by 18.
Okay.
So it's 60-degree angle, so it's going to be one way in, one way out. They'll be able to back out and just go like this. This is still intact, and you're adding parking here.
How many spaces?
I don't remember what the final was, because we had to redraw the arc spaces.
Looks like you should have. These are the parking spaces, right?
No, this way.
Is this tree going to be able to remate, the tree?
These aren't spaces?
These two trees?
But they're on an angle.
Probably not.
So they should replant at least.
Right, no, no, they're on like a 30-degree angle.
Oh, yeah.
Coming here, so not perpendicular to around a 30-degree angle.
Oh, you're going to come in here. Oh, I see. There's a little road there.
This is again, green.
And that's also the fire lane, so.
Where is the rear parking?
If this is Head Start, are they going to have pupils dropping off, right?
That parking area in the front is specifically for staff only.
And where are the kids getting dropped off?
Coming in before the buses and leaving after the buses.
But where are the kids getting dropped off?
This is still the arch or the bus drop-off here. But this is still, the turnaround's going to stay intact here, which is this, you know, that big arch or the bus.
New parking spaces are here. 18 spaces.
There you go. It's on the television.
They're all parking here, and there's playgrounds over here. So they're just adding millings around here so they can add this. We're going to put it here. This is all saturated.
Right, I understand that.
It's just wet. I was like, why don't we just do this? And they're like, nope, can't do it. And this is wetlands.
So where is the, where is the buffer remaining here?
Well, that's, so this is the plan they came up with, and this is the modification that I came up with.
I understand, but you said they're not taking out the center.
So you're still going to have the bus?
No, you said that they were taking out the...
The bus pulls in and drops off, then they go out.
But they're taking, everything from the loop forward is gone.
Well, there's going to be a remaining area here for...
So the cars are going to be parking right off the street?
Pretty close, yeah.
No, 10 feet in.
And what about the edge of the road?
Yeah, right. That's right, Charlie. It'll be pretty close to the road.
Right.
Be a 10-foot aisle.
So basically, we can put a series of trees along this front lawn area.
Of the school, but you're not blocking the parking lot, which is going to be facing the houses on the opposite side. They're going to be looking at those cars all day.
Probably sidewalk in there. I think there's a sidewalk in there.
Well, that's what I mean. It's, you're taking a school, and you're losing the school view, like every one of our schools, and now it looks like a commercial parking lot in front of all these people's houses.
Because we are planning on putting in landscaping according to our regulations and, you know, parking, you know, areas expansion.
I informed them that they would need to do the landscaping.
And probably enhanced landscaping because of the fact that it's a residential zone?
Yes.
It still doesn't help if people are looking at the cars.
The main playground is right here, okay? There's nothing here and here that they're calling a playground.
No, there's a rubberized mat here. It's a big rubberized area of playground. I don't know when it was put in.
Equipment and everything?
There's some equipment in there, yeah. It's like a rubber...
Or is that right there?
This, this, and this are all playgrounds.
Right, well, I see playground stuff here. I see something here.
This aerial is...
Right, but I see nothing here.
But it exists today. I don't know when it was put in. It's a big area of...
I went to school here. It's a huge area from the back of the school to the tree line. I know it's wet over here. So if you move the playground over next to the rest of the playgrounds, you have all this space back here that's been blacktopped for however long I've been around.
I came up with the same comments, but these three, there's three different playgrounds, and they exist. I just...
So you came up with the same, same ideas, and we're getting it thrown in front of us with this aerial map that you can't even make out what's on it, and you're, these residents here, I'm surprised they're not here screaming right now.
Well, they may not know. It wasn't advertised.
But when you, if you saw them digging up in front of your house and you knew nothing about it?
They probably don't know who to call or who to ask. They may have called the town manager's office, who knows?
So, I mean, I just think there are better, you're trying to make the best of what they gave you.
Right.
Instead of doing what's right.
I tried to make sure it met at least the minimum requirements.
But the thing is, it's a school. I mean, it's in a residential zone. It's not a business.
No, I know. The houses across are looking at the parking lot. There are a whole row of cars. And there's, how do you screen those? You don't.
Well, how do you screen, how do you, and I agree, I'm not disagreeing with you, Rich. You need a very good screen here to block these houses. But when you're trying to pull out, that screen is also going to block your site view down Post Office Road. So it's a double-edged sword there.
It's not going to survive, because that's the snow shelf anyway.
That's true.
Laurie, you want the curb, the arch to watch around, to show existing parking spaces there now, right?
They're not existing. Those are proposed.
These are proposed?
Mm-hmm.
And here?
Right.
Plus these?
Yes. So this area here will be...
The inner ones aren't bad. It's the ones outside.
That's why I said they're taking the whole arch out, and I understand where Laurie was coming from, but there's nothing left there. No, it stops. I think it stops short of the school.
There are houses down there. Franklin, did he, somebody developed that section?
Absolutely not. I don't agree with that. That, you know, we're kind of, our hands are tied.
No.
Our hands aren't tied on this. I understand the, trying to get it in before school starts and get the kids in this building. I totally get that, but that's not on us. We didn't create this. They threw it in her lap, and she's trying to make the best out of something that we wouldn't. Would anybody here approve that the way it is right now? I wouldn't.
Where are the teachers parking now if all these places are for the teachers? Are they going to get that many more additional teachers to what they have already?
What I've heard is that there will be an additional 120 children going into the school. So it's the staff that's going to support those kids. So the Head Start program is moving here. And then the other program is going in where the Head Start was over by Enfield.
The key word on that is potential 120. They only really have about 15 right now. Head Start.
It's just the number that I heard.
Is the school still being used as a school? Well, then, how many kids?
The Eagle program only has seven.
That's not going to require that many teachers.
Well, that's what I understand. Charlie, it was the elementary school for the whole neighborhood. It had how many hundreds and hundreds of kids in it every day? And it had that little parking lot forever. Then they did the addition, so they had to make changes. And then they put the parking lot on this side of the school over here, years back. And now I'm looking, and they have all this parking behind the school already, which I didn't know, because you can't see, which is nice, out of sight, out of mind. And now they're putting all this parking out front for the same amount of classrooms that have been there for 75 years.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
I mean, I get now you got paraprofessionals and everything, so you get two kids per classroom, or, you know, maybe three. I just, it's almost like they did this because they knew we wouldn't approve this. And now, okay, easier to...
I think they just were gung-ho to go move forward and...
Yeah, forget, forget anyone else.
The town doesn't realize.
Don't worry about rules, just do it. The Public Works should already know about that anyways.
Of course they should, yeah, because they've gone through this with us.
You guys, you...
Well, that sometimes is a problem, the change. But there are people around that know the process.
Yeah, probably a bunch of us will be new, because after... Yeah, probably a bunch of us will be new because after this.
That's a major problem, right?
Not to me. It ain't because I don't care. What's right is right.
I don't either. That's not, I, this has happened too many times.
Whoever gets on next will get double our pay.
It's too many times. I mean, it's like the manager pulling out the sidewalks.
The problem is, John, anything you put in there thick enough to protect the houses across the street's also gonna create a sightline problem when you're trying to pull out.
Somebody's coming in and trying to maneuver this, there could be backup traffic and it would be dangerous on Post Office Road.
That's true too, with those people pulling in and out.
Because this is so tight.
I mean, you guys can vote to have our administrative approve it, but I just have major issues with this.
I think if you went public and had a public, had to have a public hearing on it, they would hear.
Well, I don't think that this calls for a public hearing. I mean, it's just.
Sorry?
It, I, I think that this, if anything, it, it could have maybe come for you for a site plan modification.
But we have the right to have a public hearing also if you were going through this type of plan.
It is a, it is a town-owned property, so.
If it's town-owned properties, don't they have to be a public hearing automatically?
They should be, yeah.
Well, I mean, when you, when you do that in front of a school, it should have been a public hearing in the first place.
Well, that's the rule. If that's the rule.
When you put, when you're doing what they're doing here or have done.
Because it's a school, it's public property, it's supposed to be a public hearing anyways.
Right. No, 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 that's what I'm saying. That's what Jenny just said. So if that's the rule, by us allowing this to be administratively approved, we're just as bad as they are.
Well, yeah, and you're hiding it from the public.
Right.
So what are we saying? No?
I, I, I can't, I can't.
You guys can vote on it. I made my opinion very clear.
Yeah, I can't. I, I can't go along with it. Because we're as bad as they are and you're hiding things from the public and they'll wonder what happened. You're supposed to be here to.
We're supposed to be transparent. That's what everybody says.
Lori, in, in terms of one question, in terms of if we required the town to actually come before us, could we have a meeting in the beginning of August so that we don't delay it for an entire month so that we could take a look at what they're proposing and make a decision at that time with a special meeting?
I, I've always had that if people are ready, when we are off or anytime, if people are ready and there, there's no problems, it's been okay, like say with Lori or whoever the staff is, that we will meet, as long as I can get four people.
I agree, Charlie, but you can't get a public hearing together that quick.
Well, no.
You gotta post it, you gotta.
It's got it right. It's lit by the legal. If you can meet all the.
I'll be here, whatever special meeting you call, I'll be here, but it doesn't meet the requirement for a public hearing. So you gotta at least have that timeline.
You have to post it two weeks.
Well, that's what I mean. If they, if they posted it.
Post it tomorrow.
Right.
But as long as you can get four people, I was gonna say that anyhow. We're going on a summer break. There's nothing scheduled for the next month. As long as you get four people, it's always been standard, as long as I've been chair, we will meet, we, as long as you can get four people.
Well, I'll be here. I'm not ordered. I mean, I'm off next week, but.
I mean, as soon as, as, as soon as we receive anything, we would probably notify you once the package, the, the application package has been received in the office, just to get an idea of whether we could get a quorum or not in August.
And I don't want to put work on Lori, but you also have an engineer, town engineer. If they could get good plans done prior and, and get them set up. It looks like Lori has good plans already or what should be done, uh, is let her go ahead and put out the, do the, this planning. And save some time, but at least.
Well, she's trying to make the best out of it.
I, I don't want to put, door to the, door to the office. Well, I know, but, no, no, it's gotta be moved. But if we deny him, she can expedite things by doing a new plan of where it should be and what should be done so that they don't have to waste time going around, but I don't want to put the hell on plan, on the planners.
Lori, if the town actually went out and put, you know, a public hearing sign out tomorrow, what's the earliest that we could possibly meet and, and still have the two-week notice and? So, so is, is that like August 8th or is it August 2nd or? Because I, you know, I'm just looking for a date as to, you know, August.
Yep, it looks like August 8th would be the date. August 8th.
So, you know, I, I think that that saves them an entire month of delay if we didn't, if we said, you know, we want to definitely review it. So I think that it would be in their best interest to get everything together by August 8th. And we would just plan to have a meeting at that particular time.
I, and I'll be here August 8th if that's what happens?
Well.
But I don't think that's the issue. The issue is, I'm here and we don't want it out front.
No, absolutely not.
So why would you want them here August 8th with this out front to get rejected?
It's gotta be a new plan.
Right, well, that gives them time to actually.
Well, we need to make that clear to her then.
Yeah.
Right, so if they post. Right, they can't draw up a new plan and post it tomorrow. That's not gonna happen. This has been, Nick just pointed out, this goes back to May.
And what happens if they blacktop in the meantime?
Well, it's too.
They don't blacktop. They get stopped.
They got other places they can park.
Oh.
Lori, I don't like that look.
I was just gonna say.
They're gonna blacktop. I'd stop them.
Uh-uh.
Send them out and do a cease and desist. Huh?
You can't cease and desist the town. You can request that the town do what's proper, but you can't cease and desist them. And Lori is gonna do her best to let them know that we're not happy.
They don't have to come in front of us, Jenny. If you can't stop them, they don't have to come in front of us.
Oh, you might as well just let it go.
I can rob a bank because I can't be arrested and go to jail. That's what you're saying?
No.
Yes, that's what you just said.
Are you gonna serve the town manager with a cease and desist, Ken?
If they continue and go to blacktop, absolutely.
Okay.
Lori knows or has an idea where you want the parking to move.
That's why I brought up the blacktop, because they'll be out there tomorrow morning or the next day with the blacktop on.
Well, let them, then.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna make them take it out. It's the forgiveness thing, you know?
Let them do it without legal authorization then. But the, it's gonna be on you that you allowed them. I don't, I, whatever.
Well, we reject the administrative approval on this. Well, I do. I'm not speaking for you guys.
Just make the motion and reject it and go from there.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we do not allow the administrative review for X, XSP 1906, 17 Post Office Road, and that they come before the entire Planning Zoning Commission to present their application and we should have a public hearing at that time.
Second.
Motion's means.
Wait a minute, question. Does that mean we vote yes or no on this? You just made a negative.
Was it a few?
Oh, yeah, leave the public hearing out.
So basically, the motion.
You can make a, make two motions. The first one is to deny.
The motion was to deny. The administrative approval.
To deny, uh, administrative approval.
Okay, that'll be the first motion.
So that'll be a yes vote if we wanted to deny it.
Yes.
And cease all work that's happening on the property.
Do we make that part of the second or?
No, that's part of denying.
And that any work not proceed until we have an approved plan?
No, and cease all work.
Okay, and cease all work. Okay, I was trying to be a little more. And, and all work shall cease at that particular location. I'll second that.
I'm going to be voting yes, only because there's so many questions that have been brought up. And I, I think with a little bit of information and a little bit of give and take, we can figure out how to do it for the best of the, um, community and, and the kids.
So yes means you're voting to deny.
Okay, uh.
So.
So seconded?
It's Nick's second.
Okay, all in favor?
27 seconds.
Unanimous? 700. Now, the second motion would be, uh, to hold a public hearing? I'm sorry. Have, uh, new plans or relocation or location of the.
But is that our call to make that?
Well, no.
Oh, okay.
You're not in favor of this plan?
No, I understand, but it's, they haven't presented this plan to us yet.
Lori has an idea of where it should be and if Lori can, uh, at least work with them and save time is what I stated earlier.
Totally, yeah.
They're going to come back and, and request the front thing, but we can ask them for alternatives because they haven't asked.
No, let Lori tell, why'd you go all through that? Lori knows our opinion and, and she can tell them. If you do your way, they're gonna come in and then go back out.
Right, that's why I'm saying there should be no second. They can request a public hearing and do it the right way.
Right.
We don't request a public hearing for somebody. So I think we're, there is no second phase to this. And I do, and I commit to Rich and you guys, whatever day they come, I'll be here.
Oh, yeah.
Other than next week, I'm out of town, but call a special meeting and I will be one of the four here.
And you can't give them longer than the 8th. It's just that they have time to do it if you. For the second.
Well, we can either do it on the 8th if we advertise it tomorrow. I mean, we'd have to put the notice into the paper on Saturday and then the following Friday, and then we could, you could hear it on the 8th.
But what are you advertising?
Again, I have to check for room availability and then, or the 15th.
For this particular project, uh.
But they haven't, they haven't come in and applied for it. I, I mean, you need to call them tomorrow morning and say.
I understand what the process would be.
Right, so why are you doing their job?
Because we are a team and we try to work together. That's why.
Right, yeah. But she has, she has an idea where it should be.
Right.
Not in the front.
Right, she calls them tomorrow, discusses it with them, they come up with a public hearing, they present what she knows that we want.
Right.
That's gonna pass.
I don't know how long it would take them to do the drawing. It probably shouldn't take them too long to do, do a drawing.
Well, this is the town's drawing.
I mean, a, a drawing that meets.
This is the town's drawing.
Yeah.
But we can have alternatives on that drawing that would show different possibilities that could occur. And in terms of, you know, that's one possibility, but there's always more than one.
Well, I'm gonna go back on the way, I go right by it on the way home and I'm gonna walk behind the school and show the empty areas that you can park back there that they're calling playgrounds. Where the playgrounds are now on the side of the school, there may be play equipment in that one spot, but even the aerial map doesn't show anything there. So it's as simple as eliminate the front and put lines in that area that have been paved for 50 years and it's done. Problem solved. The teachers might have to walk a little farther, but you know what? There's other people that have to look at this nonstop every day.
Yeah, the neighborhood, it's not.
And, and we can put green plantings back where they took the, all the blacktop.
This, I agree with you on this, Rich. Absolutely.
No, that's, I think, the whole commission. I think the staff has an opinion of what the commission wants.
You know what's going on. Some bright people sitting over there.
Blame it on us, Lori. I'm sorry, but this ain't how it's done. I mean, this is exactly why we made administrative approval come to us.
Yeah.
Right? That's what you guys told me.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Because it was happening too frequently.
Next. We're done with this. Next.
Applications to be received.
Did you make a motion, though, Richard?
Uh, we do not have anything pending right now, um, but we are working with several developers on getting plans into the office for other projects. So, um, it's looking like if, if these developers get their, uh, projects in, that the first meeting in September could be full. Or if, you know, this other meeting happens and you're amenable to putting other items on the agenda for approval, then we can do that too, depending on if they get their project in, but, yep.
That was, uh, applications.
Okay, opportunities are unresolved issues. I guess we just took care of one. And so the chair will entertain, uh, a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
During my absence, I want to thank all of you. You did a good presentation.
Second.
We, in all favor, we stand adjourned.